So down, has to be tuned a little bit. Fit can understand the level you're looking at. We need to have an appreciation of the presentation itself.
If I could say this much, we need to fix tune of the babies. Either the next one or do you have one more for the new years? Just one year and then the next one. And then you and I just, I actually developed about, just about that stuff that you found. It's about places. What's in there? What's in there?
December 11th?
11th, yeah.
So is that okay?
I meant to ask the chair. It's interesting. So this is cool.
I just checked Angels and the. You can buy some places. I can't teach for a while.
Not long.
That's a great idea. A bad idea. There you go. That's what I miss the most about not working for a big company.
I'm so tired of her.
Holy shit, would they pump up the.
I think she's going to see Catherine was on.
Now you're watching it because.
You should be back in technology trying to.
Those are in more studies.
You're right about the copies. They store copies.
Discretion of what's printed.
That's correct. You're absolutely correct. And there never was in the past, but now they have. Even when I left, I actually kept copies of electronic copies and all this credit. Who credited how many copies?
We're just finishing up the director accounts from DMR. We'll be right down.
Oh, good, okay.
Before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to apologize. I have a very, I have a pretty severe case of sinusitis and I am blowing my nose and sneezing on end, so I may have to bail out.
All right, I'll see you guys. Meet a motion to adjourn.
If everybody would feel more.
There's a few of us in the same boat, you know.
Well, I think I just made your meeting a little shorter with my instant announcement.
Yeah, call the meeting to order. We had advertised that we were going to executive session, but that has been eliminated because of the.
Who can postpone it for another meeting?
Yeah, we're gonna postpone it till another meeting to get some details straightened out on the lease contract. So most of our, most of our businesses are going to be talking about discussion and general overview of the fiscal year 2019 budget process with the towns, town administrator, town accountant, and then financial management team. So I will open it up to you, Kelly. Take it from there.
Thank you. Oh, and what's going to be the announcement?
Well, the only, our secretary is recording it the minutes of the meeting and Mr. Gant is recording it for audio and video presentation.
Is there any, what?
And no one else is recording, I assume.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. One of the reasons we called this meeting, Selectman Gant suggested that there may need to be and should be an overview of the process that we will be undertaking and sort of already started with regard to the FY 19 budget process. Pardon me. So we wanted to have a set, a session really so that you have the opportunity to hear from us what we propose to be the process for this year and what our next steps would be and then also give you the opportunity to ask questions of us with regard and make suggestions to us if there are areas that you feel would help the process on any smoother that it can given the, you know, the number of variables and moving parts that we contend with each year.
There's a tear down here.
So we invited the financial management team to join me with this, at this meeting. We do, we do meet, we had a chance to meet again today to flesh out what's a process would be this, you know, for this season. So I think that for the most part, we've all had at least one, two, and myself at least three or four. Donna's had a lot more, well, actually Barbara. So we've all had a number of years that we've gotten the budget process under our belts and I think with Catherine as our town accountant and the experience she brings from other communities, I think that she's done a great job in helping, really sort of leading our team towards taking some of the steps that we've learned begun to do in the past four years since I've been here and trying to make them a little bit more clarifying and while there might be more pages, I think that we're trying to simplify a process that is traditionally, it's a very busy time of the year. We've got the budget, we've got the warrant, we have the capital budget. What we're trying to do is to lay out a path so that we can move things forward in such a way that we establish our guidelines and some milestones ahead of time. And this gives you the opportunity to give us feedback as to ways that you think we might be able to refine our process. So why don't I just start with the fact that what you have in front of you is the Town of Topsfield FY 19 budget packet. These were distributed last week. These went to every single department in the town with the exception of the school department, correct? They had their own process.
They, they went electronically and they, the, each town, we see just the Excel version of their template of their department, not the whole department that you see, you know, the whole town that you see here. So that way they can work on it electronically. We asked them, there's also a place for them to sign off on it. We asked them to bring it back to us either just by paper or electronic. It's usually not much to put in when you're handling one department at a time.
And this is the same, these are the same forms we used to last year, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we, we made minor variation, changes based on last year's, and then this year where the finance committee has a zero percent increase, we expect that we'll be using the same unfunded, essential unfunded format that we used last year, but we might have to break it off into, into two parts in terms of like the contractual things versus the non-contractual.
So what, what's included in here were general directions for all the departments and the guidelines that were submitted and distributed by the Topsfield and voted by the finance committee the week prior. We've given everyone their Excel spreadsheets. We've given them a three-year history. Actually, does it go back further than three years for history, budget history?
If they were to open up the columns, they would, three years is really what they would add to that.
Okay. And certainly if, you know, we're looking at three years, you're trying to pinpoint the most recent information. However, if there's a detailed discussion involving a particular line, item, or department, certainly we have years of other more detailed budgets that we can refer to, but our focus on the form is to keep us concentrating on, okay, what was the, you know, the last two years and what we're, well, we're looking at FY 17 budgeted?
So it's FY 15 actual expanded, FY 16 actual expanded, and for FY 17, we have what's appropriated and what was expended.
Okay. So five columns?
And then, and then FY 18 shows the appropriated, FY 19 starts out level funded at the appropriated with a column which has highlighted in yellow for them to increase or decrease what their departmental request is.
So we tried to make it as concise and simple as possible for them. All of their spreadsheets have been updated. There is likelihood in some cases that they might want to look back at previous history, but our focus is really to give enough of a snapshot of the recent year so that people will have a good sense of, you know, how their budget requests are aligning with their actual need. A lot of things, I'll remind everyone, this is a projection. You can't see into the future and so we're making our best guess estimates on what we need in resources to provide the services to the town based on the guidelines of the FinCom. And their guidelines essentially stated no new programs. However, they allow two different ways for us to identify other needs that might be essential but unfunded and that's on a separate sheet and that's called out and that's fully discussed. And then the other piece that we have as a part of our forms is a sheet that allows departments to say what is falling outside of the guideline to, so that they can identify that and call that out and then explain why they may or may not have any control over that amount. One good example is the solid waste contract. We have a 10-year contract, five years at one rate and the second five years at a higher rate. So that impact for this fiscal year, and we've known it for five years, is $20,000 a year for the next five years. So clearly that's above the zero percent of our guideline, but we need to pay for that and that's a contractual obligation so that we could call it out, we would explain the rationale and we'd explain how it works and we'd explain to the FinCom and the liaison, you know, why that is and be able to answer any questions about that increase and why it falls outside of the guideline so that everyone is aware of what is falling outside of what the anticipated response will be. So with the sheets, we also, so every department got their respective worksheets, they got the FinCom guidelines, they also got instructions for how their essential unfunded services need to be documented and presented so that those are outlined and that there's an opportunity for a policymaking process by their appointed board. So for Board of Selectmen, because we are so decentralized, we need to recognize that the type of budgeting process we have here is unique in that we have many different silos of authority. So we've got a water department, we've got our highway, roads, water, highway, parks, cemetery. We of course have the library board of trustees, we have the Board of Selectmen, of course, school committee. So there are a number of different, oh, the assessors, the Board of Assessors is also elected. So there's only a limited amount of responsibility that I as an appointed member or appointee of the Board of Selectmen has and that you have as Board of Selectmen to oversee the departments that are underneath your purview. So what we've tried to do is to connect and align all of those various departments and authorities in a way that we are creating an umbrella for all of the town departments which would feed centrally through the town accountant's office. But we're also trying to allow the Board of Selectmen in your authority to take a closer look at the departments underneath your authority, fire, police, all the Board of Selectmen budgets, et cetera. So all of those pieces need to come together somehow. So it's a really complex process and what we've learned over the past few years is that we can't control anything or everything, certainly, but the things that we can control, we want to identify early on in the process. We want to explain to you what the process is and what we are expecting so that there aren't any surprises for you. We also want to assure you that we are reviewing all of these numbers. So, and even though you as Board of Selectmen might not have legal authority over the recommendations of the highway division or the highway department or the road commissioners, there's an opportunity for the town accountant and the FinCom to ask certain questions and there's also the opportunity for me to informally say, okay, superintendent, you're, you're requesting this, do we really need, you know, is this the year, what, what's the reason why, is there any, do we have any leeway here, you know, things are, you know, things are really tight, what, what are you thinking? And for us to help understand better what their needs are. But we need to remember that our department heads aren't going out and trying to spend money. What they're trying to do and what they attempt to do on those resources available to them is to provide services to the community that are expected by our community because they do pay taxes and they deserve to have services, but those services come at a price. And so to the extent that we can identify where some of those policies, policy decisions might be, I'll be bringing those items to you or the departments will bring it to you, explaining what their need is, not what they're requesting. They're, they're telling us how much is it going to take in resources to deliver the services that we expect of them. And so they've been asked to come up with that number and to segregate it in such a way that everybody has an opportunity to see it and to view it, to ask questions. So what we're attempting to do tonight is to give you an overview of the process and we are taking bits and pieces. So we're taking the things that have worked in the past, like our forms and the town accountants, we've made it very clear to all the department heads, if you have a change to your budget, it doesn't go out, it doesn't go anywhere until it goes to the town accountant's office and at that time you can then include your liaison and send your copies, but everything needs to be centralized through the town accountant's office so that we're not all running in circles, tracing our tails and looking at information that might be outdated or has gone through a policy discussion at either the FinCom level, school committee, or even the Board of Selectmen or some of these other authorities. So here are the forms. So this is the science part of it. This is the, we're getting the information out to folks. This isn't anything new for them except that they're identifying what their needs are to deliver services and then they're putting them in a form so that we can look at them uniformly and then segregate them based on the, their appointment authority who then as an example, when the highway or the road commissioners, when the superintendent goes to them with the budget, they're expected to review it, approve it. So they have their own separate information. They're gonna be coinciding with the Board of Selectmen's review process. One of the things we'll do today is to get an idea from you as to when you would like to hold your budget work sessions or how you would like to. So I've seen some mixed results from some of those meetings. By that I mean all of the departments that are under the authority of the Board of Selectmen will traditionally, will pick a couple of dates and will line them all up and everybody will have some time to come in either to explain their entire budget or just the pieces that fall out of the guideline. I found that it's useful in many cases. Sometimes the departments you might not see but a few times a year, but it might be very helpful for you to understand through their eyes what their needs are, what their challenges are and why some of these expenses that sort of are essential but unfunded, why they feel that it's important enough for them to bring that to you and to defend that to you. So the other piece that's in here, this is, it's new for this year, but we took this as a suggestion. We have, we have a process timeline and I began to work on one for the warrant because that will be generated from it. We're going to, last year, I don't know if any of you recall, I know I reviewed the notes, we had a budget debriefing or a warrant process last year. And one of the pieces of feedback we received from the board was that we needed to look at the timeline and see if there are ways that we can move it up so that we're not sort of stuck at the end of the process, trying to rush in making critical decisions at the end of the process when we're trying to get the warrant to the printer.
Thank you for remembering.
Yeah. The other thing that we talked about at that session was really the idea that there's sort of three tracks. So for the most part, what we're trying to do is simplify the process by segregating with delineating different phases of it. So the first phase, so think of this as sort of like the three-pronged four. So we've got the capital budget process and I'll fill in some details, but these are general process guidelines. Now this point you look at it and you'll say, September, we were supposed to have the capital budget document in September and here it is November. There are going to be some, we're gonna need to use some flexibility with regard to these. This is sort of a transition year for capital. This should be in your packet, I think. This is in the back of your.
It's the blue one.
The blue one, okay.
Two, two of the three are there right now.
Two of the three are there and the third one, I will finish tomorrow and get that out to everybody.
What is the third one?
Well, the first one is capital.
Right.
The second one is operating budget.
Right.
And the third one is the warrant.
Okay.
And by the warrant, I mean the document, the paper, the piece of paper, the bible which has all of the 50 warrant articles.
I just wanted to have mental place hold on what's not here.
So if you think about it like capital, we want, you know, this time next year, I want to be able to deal with the capital right out of the gate, identify what the priorities are, and I'm doing that right now. So right now what I'm doing is, so I'm taking with the call-in center prepared and I am really looking at, from two years ago, I did a template that was very, I thought was very effective. What I'm doing is I'm meeting with departments, met with the school department, I'll be meeting with the highway department, I'm meeting with them and I'm basically looking at what was identified last year for FY 19 and then I will be asking questions and trying to decide what is the best way for us to present that to you on December 11th. I'll do a PowerPoint for you which identifies what those items are that were identified and how we think that that fits in alignment with the capital budget guidelines that were voted by the FinCom. So in the December 11th meeting, I'll have it ready for you. What I'm doing now is sort of vetting those. I'm using one of the tools that they gave us last year from the call-in center, sort of a ranking tool. But really just to identify what those projects are, the FinCom allowed in the budget model, they have $300,000 for pay-as-you-go capital. So of course not everything is gonna fit in there. There might be other categories of capital around, but we are going to do our best to make sure that we can be cognizant of the fact that there are three major projects going on in the town. And so we're, we're giving that a really thorough look and I'll update that and present that to you on the 11th. So that's the whole capital process. So if you sort of push that aside, no, everything is intertwined, but if you put that one aside and then you go to the operation, operating budget process. So we've begun that process because we have the, the guidelines, we've submitted all of the forms to everyone, to all the departments, the departments are working on their plan. This gives you an idea of what the process looks like through the eyes of the finance team and our town accountant who is going to be receiving those with our assistance. She'll be receiving those and entering those into our, our centralized, a more centralized system in your, in the Excel spreadsheet that she has. So now all of those, of course, tie in with our warrant. So again, I wanted to segregate the warrant preparation from the budget. So we put the omnibus budget article third, but we're also looking at other things in the operating budget, department budgets, but also how does it all fill into the bigger picture? What does that omnibus budget look like? And then all of those items, of course, are going to feed right into our warrant. So as article third is being vetted by the FinCom, we want to be in a position that I have a draft template of the warrant. It's basically a scrub down version of what you've seen every single year. We took out the amounts, I took out and I segregate them. So we've got batches. So we've got financial, we've got non-financial, and we've got planning board ZBA articles. So what I've done in terms of my planning process is I've tried to break it up so that we have smaller chunks to sort of track and then it's easier for me in terms of accountability to be able to go back to say, Donna, and say, Donna, the, the planning board and the ZBA, what's on the docket for them? What are their items that they want in the warrant? Okay, that section means that I'll be going to ask Donna what, what's going on with those articles, the financial articles, the omnibus. I'll be looking, of course, to the town accountant, to the FinCom and to our finance team so that as we, or as the finance committee makes its recommendations or takes its vote, that we can put in the numbers into the warrant so that we will have 50 different articles, but it will also end up as one full document at the end. But what people need to help under, help or to understand, but then to also assist us with is the fact that that warrant document in its, in its creation has many different versions which are constantly being reviewed, edited. They might have descriptions that are being changed based on, you know, someone who has a particular interest in a particular item. But with so many moving parts, what I'm going to try to do this year is to break it up into smaller pieces so that we have a more controlled process and a line of accountability so that I know who's gonna be responsible for what. Donna is going to be assisting us with this process, but I'm hoping that if we can get even a draft template warrant in place, then at least we have a tool that we can work with and as the FinCom votes things, we can add to it, we can update it as needed. So to the extent possible, I've started to outline a draft of the process, just like Catherine did with the budget process and the capital process. And we've also, we've gone the next step further, which is to, do we, is this in the packet or?
It's not in the packet.
Okay.
So the, these timelines that you're looking at here, they kind of give an overview of where we should be, you know, target dates of what we should be hitting each month, but then you gotta get down to business and you need to look at the details of the workday. And there's statutory requirements, you can pass those along.
Excuse me, I did just one quick question, going back, if I get too far away from. I understand the issues of version control and so on. Do you as town administrator assign a version number with date attached to it for each version? Is that how you manage it? So we're looking at something we can know.
Yeah.
Not only is this one older or newer, but is it?
Yes.
So that I think will be a very important part.
Yeah, and the dates.
Yeah.
So to put the date and the version on there is very important.
But you'll be taking of all the different versions and so on and the different tracks you have of things happening, you'll be keeping track of that and putting version numbers on.
Yes, and just like capital will be tracking the omnibus budget process, I'll be tracking the warrant process.
That's great. And I just wanted to be sure that as documents kind of come past us and we don't look at them or become as intimately familiar with them immediately.
Right.
Sometimes I find I have two things that look very similar and it's really helpful with this version number and the date that it was created.
Yeah.
And I'm not worried about proliferation of version numbers and dates, even if you do one the next day and change the date and up the version number, that's great too.
Yeah.
But it'll help all of us kind of know what we're looking at.
With the other, I think this relates to your earlier question or comment, it gets relevant to where we are. So the, the fin, the financial component of the, of the warrant, the way that's the third prong, just the budget, only talking about the budgetary impact of it, is that some years there are warrant, economic warrant, like with money.
Yes.
And if they're not really related to an override, then they go into the calculation of the budget and the relationship with the levy limit.
Part of the three hundred.
So that's, in my general experience, it's one of the hardest things for people, even experienced administrators on the school side and a little bit other towns to, to understand. They say, okay, well, we, I'm just making this up. We need $200,000 for new math books.
Mm-hmm.
Well, no problem, we just put it, just put it on a warrant article. You know, yeah, it's still American, money.
Still costs money, yeah.
You know, and then in terms of the calculation relative to the proc two and a half, the key issue is whether indeed it's looking for the voters to supplement it. So if you're adding A, B, and C equals D, the total budget, that's the component that comes up, right, that comes out of the warrant and, and in my experience, one of the most easily misunderstood by.
Agreed. And when we meet regularly, we'll be assessing the process and be making sure that as I get changes to the warrant, that I'm making sure that Catherine knows, oh yeah, they're talking about a Donnie Bristle farm, that's, you know, what, what are we gonna do with that? And we're regularly talking and meeting and trying to align those things. At the same time, we're trying to segregate responsibility and delegating various components of the process to the appropriate staff members.
But it's, I think the risk of slight redundancy, but it's, it's also, it's just if, if it's in that submitted budget, but for some reason it makes sense to put it out, that's a certain thing, but if it's not, you know, if it's capital, if it's part of the 300, even if it's article 32, it's still somewhere we've gotta keep track and be clear of all that, but it's part of that 300.
Right.
If it's not, it's, it becomes an orange instead of an apple.
Correct. In one way that we, one small way that we've tried to clarify that a little bit and it's never, there's always something that comes out of the blue.
Yeah.
But one of the ways I think we've been effective is by grouping and doing the, the agenda, so the moderator doing the consensus agendas, usually keep the, the warrant articles that have to do with pay-as-you-go capital grouped together on the warrant so that we can try to make it visually clear to folks that that is, while they're all individually voted, when we keep them together, we make it clear that if it falls outside of that 300, or you're going back to the FinCom and it's also a warrant article that needs to be reviewed by them. It's just not gonna fly for people just to throw together a warrant article. Still costs money, whether it's a warrant article or it's an omnibus budget.
So you mentioned that there are smaller pieces to the plan of the warrant and other than you mentioned financials and planning. What were the other ones?
Printing.
Boil plate, oh, go ahead.
Templates, printing, getting stuff.
Oh, no, 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 I said, you were gonna break the warrant into some smaller pieces.
Well, we've got, we've got the reoccurring articles.
So I understand you said Donna had planning.
Yeah.
And.
We have the reoccurring articles that are the same way every time, those will be one of that.
So help me, that's right. So we have recurring, okay, or, or boil plate.
Yeah.
We have planning.
Mm-hmm.
We had financials that are here. What, you tell me.
Well, by financials, what I mean is what, what Selectman Lyons was referring to. I want $100,000 so that.
You want capital.
Money related, well, there's the pay-as-you-go capital.
I was just trying to figure out how you're trying to point that out.
But then there might also be another item on there that isn't in the pay-as-you-go capital. I don't know, one example would be, and this isn't, there's no secret to this, there is one thing on the capital list that is $150,000 and so there would have to be a policy discussion about, well, the first discussion is, how badly do we need this, what's the justification? But if it reaches that threshold, there may be a discussion about, well, $150,000 would take up half of the pay-as-you-go capital. Are there other options for financing that besides pay-as-you-go? And if there are, it's okay to talk about that and to have a discussion about that. So there might be standalone articles, like the, the reoccurring one that comes up is So there might be standalone articles, like the, the reoccurring one that comes up is the Pybrook, well, Pybrook Park 20,000, that goes in the, that's been going in the pay-as-you-go capital. The other one is the monitoring for the old landfill. That's a reoccurring. But there are also things that come up. And the other pot is citizen petitions. So those are typically grouped together. And then another section might be the adoption of special acts or if there was any movement to, you know, adopt any mass general laws or anything like that. So there, and, and I think that over the past few years, what I've tried to do with the list, and I call it the list of warrant articles, is group them in such a way that people can better understand why they're there, where they're coming from, and keep the ones together that sort of have the same category. So those are some examples.
I agree. And that's typically what we've always done with the warrant is to try to have it in some logic.
Yeah.
All I'm trying to understand though is, the suggestion you made is that we're gonna break it into small pieces for management, to be able to manage it better. And you mentioned again, one of the pieces is planning, another one is financials. I'm just trying to understand what those pieces are and who they are.
I think that the smaller pieces are the, are the capital, the budget, and the warrant.
Those three things. That's good. I got it.
Yeah.
I, I got three I can deal.
Yeah, those are the smaller pieces that you're referring to.
Okay.
Wow.
Great.
Yes. And all the 50 warrant articles you could consider smaller pieces because they all have to end up in the same.
But we're trying to manage it. So I'm trying to understand how we're gonna manage the process so that it works out well this year in comparison to some of the things that have happened in the last couple of years.
Well, it's never a perfect process. I don't care what time it is.
No, 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 but how are we gonna make it better?
We've learned.
And I heard you were making some suggestions and I just want to understand them and how they, how they would work. So I can understand, operating, financials, and, and planning.
Operating.
Operating, operating.
The capital.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the warrant process.
Warrant process.
Yeah.
That's a three-pronged.
I would call, I think the third.
Those are the three parts.
The third prong is financial.
That I, those are the categories, those are the categories.
Financial warrant articles. That's the third prong.
Yeah.
I didn't necessarily.
Warrant article.
That have a financial.
And all I'm trying to understand is, let's, we're only talking about warrant at this point. And that's kind of what you were talking about at the end.
Yeah.
That you're gonna piece out parts of the warrant to different areas. And the parts that you're gonna put out are planning.
I didn't, I'm not sure that's what you were saying.
Recurring, oh, you're not.
No.
Well, I'm, what I'm trying to describe is how we tackle a big elephant in smaller pieces.
And what are those pieces?
That's more manageable.
And what are those small pieces for the warrant? The elephant of the warrant.
Omnibus budget, capital articles.
Yeah.
Planning board articles.
Planning, got it.
Citizen petitions. Financial related warrant articles, that might be a standalone. It could be borrowing for a water treatment plant. It could be borrowing for a big major building.
How many people do we have? You're not gonna have a separate person trying to deal with, with citizen petition.
Delegation, I'm talking about organizing the work of a 50-item warrant so that it is manageable and I'm not chasing my tail or wasting any of your time and tax dollars chasing after information. So as a manager with a degree from Northeastern University, I'm explaining to you how I and my team will take this major project and like any good project manager, will break it up into smaller pieces so it's manageable and so that we can control what we can control and deal with the things that we can't when they do come up in a calm and organized manner.
Brilliant. In that spirit, can I ask a question? What did you want to say specifically?
No, that's fine. I just wanted to say one thing is that these, the two other areas, the capital area and the operating budget.
Yes.
Those are two significant areas of the warrant process. And that, so those, those were breaking out. But there's all those other things where we're basically saying, okay, everything that, everything else that's in the warrant as a third prong is being final towards, towards Kelly in terms of being responsible for that. Will I take over the, you know, take, take charge of the budget process? Similar to how we ran it last year.
Right.
You know, and that's why like I attend the finance committee so I can be right on top in terms of what they're, what they're thinking about during the, during the budget. And then I feed back to her what they're talking about for the warrant. You know, it goes both ways. It's the communication piece and it's the, the meeting up. And what I need from the Board of Selectmen is to just get a sense of, first of all, your trust in our capability to do the best job we can with what we've got, which is you're, you're looking at it. So that's the first thing, is your trust. And the second thing is that I get the leadership that I need from you as a board to help to make this process as manageable as we can possibly make it. And the way that you can do that is by helping me to better frame what we've already given to you as our examples here so that there's no confusion or misunderstanding or that your expectations are met. So I would presume if I were in your shoes, that my expectations, if I were you, of us, is that you're gonna get a balanced budget while working with the FinCom and all of these other pieces of our decentralized government, that we will be doing what we can with our authority and our capacity to work with the finance committee and with all the independent appointment authorities. And that I will be looking to you when we go into warrant mode, that I will be providing you with a list of preliminary warrant articles and then a draft template document. If, you know, if there's wording, I remember one of the suggestions is a minor thing, one of the suggestions last year, and I agreed with it. You know, is it reason appropriate or to transfer to raise and to appropriate? Like, we'll, we'll go through that with our template. We'll straighten those chromatic things out. And, you know, the misalignment of the numbers. You know, there was a last minute change last year. We were trying to do a best practice and it didn't work and we're not gonna go down that road again. But the reality is that the day before printing, the whole numbering system got changed. And so we missed a few numbers. I'm not perfect and I take responsibility for that. But this year, what I'm trying to do is to avoid that by giving as much known information as possible at the front end of the process so that at the end we can deal with policy decisions, making the balanced budget work. What you need from us, I'm ready, we're willing to do that for you and to provide that to you. And so we're sort of laying out the plan and giving you the overview right now so that if you have any specific suggestions that we might not have already touched on, that you can give those to us now so that we are all on the same page.
Right. So may I, Mr. Chilwell? I try to acknowledge redundancy before I do it, but sometimes there's a point. I appreciated the comment before. So I'm trying to give all of us a safety net. So it, it's simplistic in a way, but I think it will help. So the first, so I work backwards. So the first is that I'm looking for the jail date, okay?
For the what?
The jail date, the date that we go to the printer.
Oh, the jail, the date we go to jail?
The date we go to jail. So that's a 3/27/18.
3/27/18, okay.
So last year, how long a time period was there from that, working backwards, to the day that the warrant was finalized from the Selectment period? It was very close, right?
A day.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we were meeting on a work session, right.
So as, as I did, I was, I appreciated you bringing that forward and I was at least one of the people that tried to initiate this. So in this, as a planning tool, just here at the beginning, how much time is there from the date, from our internal deadline, but that we need to treat as a hard deadline and the date it has to go to the jail, to the printer?
So backing things up, you know, so the town meeting on May 1st. The first hard deadline is that the constable to post the warrant, that's statutory, 14 days. So we have that on April 16th.
Okay, just pause for a minute. Okay, I got you. Constable to post the warrant, give it on. Again, I'm not trying to say it's gotta be done and ready and perfect before the constable votes, all right? Keep going, that's okay.
Yeah, so the next place where we go into statutory requirements is.
Thirty-five times seven, four.
Ballot, the ballot questions.
Right, 3/21, deadline for two and a half ballot questions. And that is 35 days.
That's for the submission of the ballot questions.
Yes. And that's, that's 35 days from, from the town meeting.
But we, but we could have the rest of the warrant completed by the law.
And that's, that's the, that's the goal, but there are places where, where changes can happen and deadlines can be tweaked. So that's what we're trying just to identify. You know, I mean, the, the idea is that when, you know, comes January, not now, kind of jumping back in time, or towards that now. January 5th is when we're hoping to have the, the budget to vote for.
I'm gonna hold off in a minute, we'll get there.
We're trying to get out of this question.
This is what I'm trying to do, to build in ideally two weeks, but at least one week. That's just an additional component, that's just proofreading of the warrant.
Right.
That's, that's what's been missing, I, I think. So I'm, and I don't need a response right now, but is, I mean, the question, is, is that in here? Do we do that? And if not, is there some way we can do it before this becomes final?
Yes.
You know, none of us, and I think we share that regardless of.
Well, right on.
You don't want that in our hands.
You're on a roll, keep going.
The way to build that in would be to add a Board of Selectmen meeting for when we need the votes.
Yeah.
Which really between.
And I don't, I don't say this to anyone, but personally, I'm willing to come to, in reason, as many extra meetings as needed to do that.
So what's not in this calendar right now is, is the FinCom meetings and the votes for them. You know, we kind of have ideas of where they go. This, this actually is being fed from a month-to-month calendar. That makes it very visual to.
And I'm not speaking for anyone on the FinCom, but I would hope and I would be relatively certain that if we went, after we've got our act together on these dates, we went to them and said, we need you to balance the budget a week earlier.
Yes, yes.
That they would do everything you believe possible to do that.
The FinCom's response has basically been at their meeting every, every Monday from, you know, this date to that date. So there's a lot of flexibility there in terms of when we can put these vote dates in.
Right, but they look to our, they look to our side. So if we just, I'm looking for two weeks.
You're on the right, that's exactly what we were talking about.
Because what you said before, I also agree with, we're all human and stuff happens.
Yeah. So that's the, that, and that's where all of this, so we're getting more, we're getting a little bit more detail, but just to let you know, the end of, so the process all filters down to this schedule for us and a calendar. So all of this is gonna filter in and we'll be sharing the calendar and we'll have this all in one place. But our next step after tonight's meeting is to go back and we heard that the FinCom plans on meeting every Monday except maybe holidays. So we'll plug in all of those dates. One of the challenges that I had last year and years before is that there's a lot of overlap. So there's a lot of board meetings that are on the same night as FinCom and obviously we can't be in two places at once. So we have enough notice now that we plug in those dates and we see where the overlap is. And then maybe we just ask the FinCom, okay, if you're going to be having a meeting that night and the, and the board's meeting, maybe that's an opportunity for a joint meeting, like as just a touch base of both of the committees. So we're gonna be plugging those in. I'm gonna be finishing this overview of the process. We can, I can tie that up tomorrow. We can plug in some more dates. And then we're gonna literally go through our calendar and say, does that make sense? Does that make sense? And that's really what we're doing.
So my request is that.
Two weeks buffer.
Towards the end, it says, if these aren't the right words, you guys will learn, but final warrant draft to Selectmen.
Yeah.
And then it has a two-week period that says Selectmen review of warrant.
Say that one more time because those are purpose.
So before the jail date, it goes back and it says, it says.
Final draft.
Final draft warrant to Selectmen.
Yes.
And then it should say, it shouldn't be implied, it should be explicit.
Selectmen to town administrator.
Selectmen review of final warrant.
Complete.
We're not far off on that right now. If you look at 3/12, it does have.
TA sends final warrant to Selectmen.
Yeah, on, on March 12th and then.
Yeah, March 12th is pretty much the date you're gonna zero in.
Yes, yes, yes. That's our target.
I, I agree with Mark's, Mark's point of it. The fact that that is the review period for the Selectmen would be just a line worth adding because it makes it explicit, A, in terms of our responsibilities.
Oh, I see that.
Anybody looking at this schedule will see that's what we're doing in this time. We're not.
And it's a buffer. So the other stuff doesn't drift into the area, you know.
Exactly, yeah, I think it's very.
So are you, so you're, just so I'm clear, sorry if I'm being redundant myself. I don't have that date on there, but what you're suggesting is that there'd be a, a period of time where it goes to you for review and then everything is due a few days later or at another meeting, two weeks.
Right after it says TA sends final warrant to Selectmen under 3/12.
Yeah.
It might also say, Selectmen begin two-week review process.
Okay, perfect.
Right, and then when you go say, and councilman for my colleagues. But to me, if we need an extra meeting in not two weeks.
It's fine, yeah, we can, we can have discussion meetings along the way there, but I think that's.
Because some of that is individualized. It's for each of us to go through it, but then, then it's something we have to.
And honestly, quite honestly, it's very helpful to get your feedback. Honestly, it is. I, I, I welcome that. The issue becomes when you're getting close to the deadline and you've got 50 different people giving you feedback and you've got the deadline to get the warrant to the Board of Selectmen for review and for signature. And then everybody's saying, well, wait a minute, I gave you my review, my, my, so we can't, we just need to try to avoid that. And I think giving that two-week review period, I think, makes it clear that we're giving it to you. You have two weeks to do that. And at the end of the two weeks, I get to take everything back, synthesize everything based on what I understand, no?
No, you would do that if you'd be after the end of the first.
Two concepts, yeah. One is, it, we may have to meet during that time with you.
Right, right.
And we're not just gonna suddenly, the day before it goes to jail, we're not gonna just draw a bunch of changes.
That's what I'd like to incorporate in your lineup, right?
The integration process. Even if we get the warrant on 3/12, it's not as if we haven't seen that thing. We're gonna be, all the way through this process, we're gonna be, we're gonna be cleaning it up. So when we get it on 3/12, it ought to be pretty clean.
Yeah, so the place where this is, where this is sticky, and this is why I said an extra meeting would be helpful, is if you look on 3/26, we're asking you to vote on the final warrant. And then 3/27 is when it goes. What we'd like to do is a third week there.
Yeah.
And by having a, a Board of Selectmen meeting the week before, you know, in the, in between the 12th and the 26th, that Monday, then we can do that successfully. We can move everything a week, we can have a week for the, for the end, you know, for the review.
Yeah, that last vote has to be pro forma.
Okay, yeah.
Exactly.
You know, we've gotta know, we've got it.
It's just, you're getting, you're meeting for 10 minutes and saying, yes, your vote, okay, fine.
And I think that would be.
Okay, so you're.
On the schedule, I don't see Masco's budget in here.
So.
We, we're gonna have the date when that budget is due to us. Maybe earlier.
Yeah.
But at least we know that it could be that late because that affects some final decisions that you've made.
Sure.
Please?
It's gonna be in the beginning of that first, of that two-week period.
Yeah, but it's 45 days before the first.
First, but the second week of March, yeah. So it should be there by 3/12.
We know what it is, but it's calculated and they can.
So the finance committee has met with both schools at this point too, and they, they have an idea, I mean, well, that they've, they've, the finance committee has given their expectation that the budget's gonna be sent in a timely manner and the schools responded positively to that.
Which is by 3/12 as far as you know, Catherine?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think that's key and I don't think that's, given the fact we have to guess it so much anyway because the state monies are not clear and everything.
Right.
Doing it a week earlier than we sometimes have been doing it is not gonna be, I think, an undue burden on Masco.
Right. And, and with this, in fact, as far as the state monies, right through the entire process, we'll basically be basing it on what's going on this year. One, they don't change that much. And, and two, the, the, they generally don't finalize it during this process. So, you know, we, we won't be, you know, looking every day to see what the state's done because they basically have it moved, you know.
We go with a guess on some of the things.
We'll, we'll level fund it. We'll level fund what the expected revenue is.
Yeah.
So what, but your suggestion is that we would put something in here that would state like Masco budget expected.
Budget two, Masco budget two.
On 3/12.
Okay, whatever it is, it's, it's not statutory, but it is contractual with Masco.
Well, we can just look in the website and find out.
So we know what it is, 45 days before, March, May, whatever our meeting is.
Well, we have a guy sitting here that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Here's, here's gonna be the, here's gonna be the challenge, because I have the Masco scheduled here for all of those reasons. On 3/7 is the last scheduled Masco meeting prior to the 12th. Typically, we would go budget adoption on the 14th. That's the way the current budget process for Masco is set up. Everybody knows Topsfield's first and they didn't have this sheet to go by. So the question is gonna be to contact the chair, the superintendent, Susan Givens, and ask if they could move the adoption up to any time prior to the 12th, which would be that Wednesday.
Can we have a volunteer? Of course I can do that.
Well, so the, the thing is that we also.
I'll, I'll carry the water and I will support it.
We, I just had to relook at, we'll also talk about putting a week in between the 26th and 27th.
Oh, right, so that means it's earlier.
So we might have to, we might have to prepare a final warrant, a final warrant to be with the Selectmen without the Masco numbers in there right then.
Oh, so you're saying if you put the jail date later, then you'll be able to, okay, then you've got a little bit of extra time.
Yeah.
I know Masco, while I would. I know Masco, um, while I would, with my new hat on, uh, support moving that date forward, I know how incredibly difficult it would be for them because we just won't have all our numbers by the seventh. If we could go and continue with the fourteenth.
Yeah.
Masco voting, and it will be voted then, we don't break up until we finish that night.
One of the struggles that we had in the.
I think it's more.
Yes.
No, it's.
You gotta, you gotta. Accepting the last couple of years, which I, I continue to say went really well. But one of the struggles we've always had with Sue Givens was that we'd ask for a preliminary number so that we could use it as a modeling number till the real one came.
I will push that with Bill Hodges.
And I, over and over again, said, you qualify it in any way you want, but in writing it.
No, we will do that.
And to the point where we had people who had some experience, but not the official responsibilities calculating in the number of the head, but it's not the right way to do it.
And that's gonna be especially important if it's gonna go over the guideline number that, that the FinCom issued last week.
Yeah, and usually by that point, um, salaries are already known as much as we can know.
Right.
Um, we've got our health costs lined up at that one, that comes like January typically.
Yeah.
Um, those are the biggies, um, and then what we're tending to be doing is discussing, you know, how much are we gonna put in stabilization, how much are we gonna spend on this new thing, how much are we gonna put into OPEB? Things like that that are, it becomes a guess as to how the school committee's going to vote. But we could, to be quite honest, those are all, basically, that's a half million dollar up and down.
Right, and there was that, that step of then the app, the, the, where basically she had the gross number.
Yeah.
But it was the application of the formula as to how it would hit Topsfield. That's where the resistance point was, but maybe it's, maybe, maybe it's going, maybe, but there's some point we need that help, you know what I mean?
Let's start this way. It's, um, the Chief Financial Officer there legally works for the school committee. The school committee will make sure that we have that information.
I know that, of course she does.
Thirty-two percent, so we'll both go get that.
For Masco, Masco was three percent, about the schools, it was, it was, so.
For the item, for the Masco item, just as, as a clarification too, that actually doesn't really impact my end, that's more of a budget item.
Well, for, in terms of, now we're looking at the model.
Yeah.
So in terms of the model, we'll estimate it at three percent. Because then if the, the question becomes, if it goes over that, are they looking, you know, is, is.
Over around, yeah. Right, right, but there's a point where that, that modeling matures and to get towards reality, that's what we're talking about.
Ballot question. Right. Exactly.
Kevin, one thing I can say in advance, and I know this is the decision, the path that has been chosen by the Budget Committee and voted on by the committee as a whole. Um, Masco will be using the, um, process of a separate warrant article for critical things that are capital related and emergency nature and outside our normal operating budget. So there will be some capital items, we will have those outlined in advance. I presume they don't go against the three hundred, but I don't know.
Do, do you think for, um, for the shears, I thought at that last meeting, you said that, that the capital issues are gonna start maybe in the next year or the next two years?
The big ones when we get into seven figures, what we're going to try to do is, when we start the process, we're gonna take a bunch of bands and then roll them into one single long-term debt.
Yeah.
When our last one rolls off in twenty twenty-two, I think it was in twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
In the interim, there are some things, like the roof is going so fast, it's not worth replacing right now because we wanna get school billing authority funds and we've gotta do some stuff there. And we're not willing to take on the six million dollars of that, but we may have to put a couple hundred thousand into repairing the roof enough that it remains safe. That's the kind of thing that will show up. We're forced to do some interim repairs just to get to the point where the truly long-term solution will get resolved.
Yeah.
And I'm on the committee that is looking at the capital asset management plan for the district. And we're right in the process right now of, I'll give you an example of the way we're thinking. If we're gonna do the roofs, one of the questions is, are we gonna think about putting solar up there? We've just sort of come to a point where we said we don't think we want solar on the roof for a lot of good reasons. And among them, um, we've asked to have our consultant do cost estimates, so we're running ahead on that. And I think we should be able to give you estimates of the, certainly the content and the rough size of potential warrant articles.
Yeah.
They won't be voted for sure until the budget is voted.
So what will be important there is the, the Finance Committee's very active and very strong in making sure that the liaison for the, for the Masco school is aware of what's going on with that, so they can bring it forth to the meeting.
And I'm sort of supporting, it's Bill Hodges, and I'm sort of supporting him because he's also Chair of the Budget Committee there.
Yeah.
And sometimes they meet when you guys have the FinCom's meeting and so on, but I will be a backup to that and you can definitely ask me to poke in the ribs if you are lacking something you need.
So based on what you just said, and I'm working on the template for the, for the warrant, am I leaving in another capital warrant article? Is it premature for me to assume that there may be another warrant article in there, like we had last year for capital?
Leave a pace placeholder, I think there will be one Masco warrant article and we'll probably do the same thing we did last time, which is break the total amount into quarters. We'll pay for some out of E and D in the last three towns, each pay a quarter of the total. My guess is that it's going to be under a million because nobody has the stomach for that. It will probably be under half a million if we can possibly do it. We're gonna make it as small as possible, I said.
For everybody? I mean, that divided by three?
No, no, that. Divided by four.
By four, okay.
So I'm thinking it's gonna be into six figures, but low six figures at best, at most, probably. I'm pushing very hard specifically because of Topsfield's experience in the last couple of years. It, this is a time we really have to focus down, so, um, we're going to be doing only things that will, if not addressed, like if the roof is not addressed and we get more and more leaks, we have a metal framework up there, if that starts to rust and we go to replace our roof, we're now talking millions more replacement, we don't wanna do that. So we're going to be, um, basically stop gapping ongoing damage and things that are directly related to safety, and that's all. No educational stuff at all. And I'm afraid it's all gonna be around building stuff because the building is.
Right. So I mean, that's a perfect example of sort of the world we're living in now where now we're like, oh, great, it's, do I keep it on the list, do I not? If I put it on and then I number everything and then at the last minute they say.
Put a placeholder in.
This is, this is, it's a perfect example of sort of the challenge that.
I think it's pretty likely there will be something there, because we need to do it, we can't put in our operating pressure to get close to three percent.
So then the thing that I would ask, and maybe, and we should definitely have a sidebar on this, is, is just the best way, and I'll reach out to Susan Givens as well, but, um, you know, even if we knew, okay, this is the date that we'll have a better sense of, or if there's a long-term capital plan, from a capital perspective, that would be helpful for me as the person who has to put together the capital plan for the town,